Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board. Tonight is April 29th, I believe, 2024. We are here at the Senior Center and also virtual. The first item this evening is Planning Board Reorganization. Following the election, it looks like we're going to change some spots. So is there any motions or discussion as to what should happen by way of reorganization?
Well, I'd like to nominate Rob Bamber for Chair.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to second. Rob Bamber for Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passed. Congratulations, Rob.
Did anybody ask Rob if he wants to be Chair?
Oh, did we?
Should there be discussion?
Yeah, there's discussion. Well, I guess.
I almost said no.
No, no.
Brian, I'd like to nominate Debbie Homewood again as Vice Chair.
Okay.
Fall into line.
Does he have a motion?
Yes, there was a motion.
Second? Is there a second? There's a motion to second for Debbie Homewood as Vice Chair. All in favor?
Well, does she accept?
Oh, yes.
I didn't know it was an option. Okay, yeah, fine.
All right. Aye.
Aye.
And I'd also like to make a motion, Brian Hatch, E.V. Clark.
Okay. So, second. I guess somebody has these motions. Do we actually reorganize in a second? All right, so there's a motion on the floor to make me, Brian Hatch, the Clerk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
It's so easy to get along with.
That was a pretty quick reorganization.
It sure was.
So we do this now?
You're the Clerk.
If I can.
Yes.
Thank you for serving as Chair for the last year. I'd like to recognize Brian. He did a great job. You guys had an ambitious agenda last year. Big zoning changes, you know, brought to town meeting in March. And Brian, you did a fantastic job shepherding the board through all of that business. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Thank you.
I turned over my laminated sheet that Lynn saw night before me.
Lead the chair first.
It's his first night.
All right.
Do you need a minute?
No, should I? All right. Good evening. Welcome to this meeting, the Norwood Planning Board, Monday, April 29th. I'm Rob Bamber. I'm the Chair of the Board. Quorum is present and a meeting is therefore called to order. Tonight's proceedings will go as follows. Public hearings will be opened by reading the legal notice into the record. The applicant will have the opportunity to make their presentation to the Board. The Board members may then ask questions of the applicant. Once the Board has concluded its questioning, I will open the hearing to the public for comment. All members of the public in attendance who wish to ask a question or make a comment must wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking. Once recognized, be prepared to state your name and address for the record and speak loudly for all to hear. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair, and I will call upon Board members and/or the applicant as needed to respond. The Board will then move into a period of deliberation where it will determine whether or not it closes the public hearing and moves to a vote, or continues the public hearing to a later date. A few quick reminders before we begin. We request the participants in the evening's meeting remain respectful to attendees, Board members, applicants, and staff. Please be concise in your comments and presentations to ensure that sufficient time is available for others to comment and for the Board to deliberate. Please turn your cell phones to silent and refrain from side conversations so that all participants in the meeting can hear. Thank you. Our first agenda of the night is site plan review for Town Cottage Street, Harmony Oshewski, the Bodie Spa. Is there a legal notice on this? No legal notice. Not a public hearing.
Something.
Is the applicant here?
I'm Jamie Oshewski.
Welcome.
Harmony's husband.
Welcome. The floor is yours.
Did you email it to?
Sent it to Lynn.
Sent it to Lynn.
I've got it here.
I don't know that I.
There it is. It's in Town Cottage Street.
Yeah, I had the plans that you sent in, but not the. She might have put it in my back here.
Yeah. Presentation, here it is.
Jamie, did you want to start? Let's talk about the Bodie Spa.
Yeah. So for those of you who aren't aware of what the Bodie Spa is, it's a hydrotherapy day spa. It's a place where men and women over the age of 16 can come to have a place for peace, wellness, healing. We bring this to the communities that we serve. So currently, right now, we have two locations. Our first location was founded in Newport, Rhode Island. 2015, we opened our doors. In 2020, we then opened the doors in Providence, Rhode Island. And now we're looking to come to this wonderful community in Norwood. The whole concept of the spa, it's not your traditional, you know, going for nails or massage or hair. We have a very unique concept called the Water Journey. And the Water Journey is a series of hot and cold pools, saunas, and cold plunges. So we have a 98-degree pool. We have 104-degree pool. We have 55 and 50-degree cold plunges. Then we have your traditional saunas and steam rooms as well as infrared sauna. And the whole Water Journey, as we call it, has been curated by my wife, Harmony. It's really her brainchild, to go through a circuit for hot and cold therapy. So you start in the 98-degree pool, get your body to, you know, your natural body temperature, and then you go through this series of hot and cold to, you know, really spend two and a half hours of peace and wellness and relaxation. And then we also do provide traditional services, so massages, facials, body treatments, and things like that. So we're really, really excited for Norwood. We see this as a great place to open this business. And I'll tell you, like, in the last decade, we've seen, you know, over 100,000 unique people through our doors in both locations. So it's a real destination for folks to come, enjoy the facilities around the spa as well and not just come and enjoy, you know, the Bodie Spa. So thank you very much for your time. We put a lot of effort into the site plan as well as all the rest of it, which Andrew's going to happily go through.
So I'm Andrew Doyle. I'm a senior architect at Titan Architects in Providence. And we've worked with the Bodie team on their other facility in Providence, well, in Newport, I believe, a little bit.
Yep.
Right. So I joined recently, so I helped with the Norwood version. So I'm going to go through this. I'll try to keep it brief. I know that you've already seen most of the documents, of course, and I don't want to belabor it too much. I'm going to show you all the same slides that you received in your deck. I added a couple context shots just to familiarize everyone with the location. I'm sure you're already aware of it. But here we are. We're kind of nestled between the transitional buffer zone for residential and then down in the commercial frontage zone. So pretty important, the lighting levels, I know that much. We're right across the street, just about from the tablet lot. As Sarah outlined in her memo, we're going to be utilizing actual parking for this facility. And that leaves more space in the landscape for vegetation and plantings. So in the next slide, we've got a sense for the existing building. The building is from 1900, at least one of them. It's actually three buildings that were combined into one at some point. So there are some interesting moments in there. And most of the exterior, I believe, just about all of it is masonry construction. You'll see in the next slide, again, the existing conditions. There's some beautiful trees there that we've really gone out of our way to try to preserve. You know, the contractor was trying to put a dumpster over one at some point, so we avoided that. And we're going to try to keep all the other landscape plan. Of course, removing the existing signage and whatnot. And in the next slide, you'll see we've modeled the existing conditions, concrete steps or a concrete ramp going into the entry right now. We're going to reroute the entrance to the building. Otherwise, this building was designated business. We're going to keep it that. We are not increasing the occupancy. There won't be any exterior addition to the building. So everything that we're doing as far as modifications to the building are going to happen on the inside and basically the exterior facade. So moving forward, the other view. So this is our proposed site plan with some plantings here. You can see the permeable pavers. They're going to enter on the opposite side of the site. We'll get rid of that concrete walkway, again, preserving all the trees. We'll add some additional landscaping. One important programmatic element of this project is the privacy for the occupants of the spa. There are going to be times, especially in weather like this, where occupants and clientele are going to be coming outside, perhaps in towels, bathing suits. So it is important for them to have privacy from the street. At the same time, we don't want to just build a fence right up along the sidewalk. So what we're doing, you can see, sort of on the south side of the page, we're giving some relief from the privacy fence and opening that up so you can see some of the landscaping in there, including those two beautiful trees out front. And at the recommendation at the last meeting, we've added a gate out front as well so people can't sort of wander into the, wander into the site after hours. But that was a great comment. This is our planting plan. We had a little bit of an issue with this on our first submission. We had some nominated species, so that has been resolved in this version. And we'll be resubmitting the entire packet with this modified planting schedule on here. But outside of the existing plants, we're going to densify everything. And again, you can see the, this area down here will all be open, you know, so people walking down the sidewalk will be able to see that. That will be all open to the public for the most part. And the next slide, you'll see here, below that permeable paving, we will have perforated pipe. And we have over here another overflow drain that was requested at the last meeting. So we've got all of that in here now. And the roof drains will be ready for that. That's okay. That was just about that. This is our lighting plan. In our previous presentation, we had some uplighting on those big trees, the two in the front and the one in the center. We've since removed that. This is very close to some residential buildings, you know, right here, actually. So we'll get rid of those. We'll keep the night sky dark. And we really only have some small lighting along the pathways for egress, egress lighting to get those levels appropriate. And the operating hours, Jamie, you said they were?
8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
9:00 PM. But of course, you know, the program, it's about relaxation.
I mean, as low lit, dim as, yeah. No glaring spotlights.
Or noise, really.
For sure. Or noise. And we, you know, so in our two locations, our Newport location has an outdoor space like this. Every single one of our locations is surrounded by residiencals as well, exactly like this. So in Newport, it has that outdoor zen experience where folks can go out and expand the footprint, you know, sit in a lounge chair, listen to the birds, look at the trees, and, as they call it, forest bathing. So extending that, you know, relaxation to the outdoor space. And that was one of the main attractions to this location with the outdoor space. You know, Providence does not have an outdoor space, and this is kind of Newport and Providence, all the greatest things that we've learned in our experience over the past decade is all going into this location. It is going to be the number one spa across New England, probably up to the Eastham Seaboard. It's going to be a huge destination. So excited.
So I'll show you some before and after shots here. This will be the after. As you can see, we'll be adding a cedar screen, privacy screen, and other things. And we'll walk through this. I'll probably skip through some of the elevations quickly. But collaborative siding up here, there's some existing siding. I think it's vinyl. We're going to replace that with wood up along this area here and then mirror that over on this elevation up on the sidewalk to carry that across. And in the next slide, you'll see the other angle, the existing, and then the new will be on the next slide. There's an existing sign here. We will be putting, proposing a new sign there, new signage, and that will be the only location for signage. The existing sign between the trees will be removed. That will just be all vegetation for the most part. Yeah, that's mine. It's okay. Let's keep going. Moving right along. To keep the inside dark, you know, we've looked at the existing windows quite a bit. At some of the other facilities, we've had some strategies for basically encapsulating those windows to try to keep it darker inside. In this case, we're pretty nervous about moisture control, so what we're going to do is actually just remove many of the existing windows and insulate that void that we create, which would be better for building performance anyway. And we've come up with a nice way of treating that on the exterior so it doesn't look like just a boarded-up window. We're going to have some nice cedar detailing on the exterior on the street front, which you'll see in one of the next slides. Outside of that, we're adding a window in the back here on the south elevation. That'll be on the upper story. You can basically see everything else that we're doing, closing up some windows. Maybe the biggest change to the exterior is going to be the blazing here that goes out into the courtyard. There's an existing window here. We're going to remove, add a door, new front door. And we also have a roof access ladder that we'll be adding to the right side of the building. That'll be the west side. Moving forward, a little bit about the signage. So we calculated this based on the facade area for that, for that elevation. So we're following the bylaws there per section 62.16. There it is. We'll show you a version of what that looks like. This will be basically the same signage that we've done in Providence as well with the same lighting. It'll be lighting directly down on the sign. The sign itself is not lit. And you can see a rendering of that in the next slide. It'll be here, right on Cottage Street. Previously, when we were hoping to encapsulate the windows, we're going to turn them into accessible sort of planter boxes so we could put flowers and things out there. But again, creating that volume right behind the water treatment room. We're nervous about moisture getting in there. So we'll still have this cedar detailing, the slats along the window, but probably not any plants in there. View from the other side, and this is, as we were talking about, you'll be able to enter in here, trying to push that fence back and create some dense vegetation along the front. So it's a little sidewalk park area. Moving forward. So from here, we have the interior of the building. I'm happy to talk about any of this. I put some, some of the detail shots at the back if anyone had any questions, but for the most part, that's the presentation. And we'll leave the rest for your questions, and we can get into the details, whatever you think to talk about.
Thank you. Joe?
No, I just have a question. The town engineer had some comments. I believe you may have already taken care of that and updated that.
Yes. Yes, there's a comment about drainage. Want to see our drainage plan, so we engaged with the civil engineer who did some test pits on that front lawn and calced everything out. And that's where that perforated pipe drawn in and the overflow drain up along the sidewalk.
Okay. So you're square with him?
We are square.
Okay. And as far as the sign goes, Sarah, do we need anything else or this will take care of it? They don't have to do, do anything else on the sign?
No, the signs are compliant.
Okay.
I would recommend, just because we haven't had a follow-up memo from the Director of Public Works in Town and New Year, Mark Ryan, you haven't had a chance to review your revised plans, just to confirm that you've fully addressed all of his comments. I do recommend, as a condition of any potential approval tonight, you including your kind of standard language about, you know, plans must be kind of confirmed.
After the.
Yes, exactly. You know, final plan submission should be confirmed by the town engineer as compliant with the memo previously submitted.
Ernie?
Yeah. It really looks nice. I mean, this is kind of new for Norwood, believe me. I'm sure my wife will be thrilled when she hears about it. As far as your uplighting on the, on the trees, I know you pulled it out, just a personal thing, I think it looks good. And I think if you shielded it, you shut it off at nine o'clock, you know, when the place closes, I don't think you'd have an issue. I just, I like it, but that's just. But going back to the plans, you had mentioned earlier a dumpster on a contractor, but are you going to have an exterior, I didn't see it on the plans, exterior, or maybe I missed it, exterior dumpsters, air conditioning units? You said this is a lot of water. Are there any exterior water tanks or recycle filters that are going to be outside the building or on the roofs or anything, or is that all?
Yeah, yeah, I can talk through that. If you, could we pull up the?
Maybe I just missed, I went through the plans. I didn't make any.
No, I didn't. I didn't make any mention of it. There is going to be a trash area along the sidewalk that will be closed in the same privacy fence. At our last meeting, we did discuss the fact that we can't put a dumpster there, so those will be trash cans. And I believe the existing trash enclosure is in the same location. So that'll be in this, this corner here. So we'll screen that off.
And that's the corner, that's the corner of, what is it?
This is Cottage.
That's Cottage, okay. Okay.
And then there's a residential.
Residential, yes.
Yep, right there. So that's where garbage will be. There is an existing generator here that we're removing, so there won't be anything, anything mechanical on the site lawn anywhere. Everything's going up on the roof. There's going to be a pool unit that goes up here. It's going to be pretty far back. I really doubt you'll see it from the street. And other than that, we'll be removing a couple existing units on the roof as well. Let's see.
Most everything will be up on the roof?
All going to be up on the roof.
Yeah. The goal is to have everything on the roof. We need, we want to keep the real estate here for people to enjoy.
As a contingency, if, you know, for whatever reason, we've been thinking, if something did have to go on the ground, we're going to create a little pocket around here where we have some extra space. And again, that's a touch. Sorry.
I know. I didn't know that.
But yeah.
None of us know how to use it.
Fair enough. Neither do I. So that would go back here, sort of away from the street front, if we did have to do that.
Okay. And just, I'm just curious about the business itself, nothing to do with the plan, which I think is wonderful.
Yeah.
Hot topic right now, these ice plunges. Is this kind of what's part of the, what this?
Yeah, we, so in Newport and Providence, we have one cold plunge, and it sits at 55 degrees. And it's definitely the love-hate relationship for all of our guests, but it's the feature attraction.
It seems like the big thing now. These people take these ice plunges for, and then they get out and they're supposed to tighten up the skin or something. Yeah, freeze it.
That's right.
Basically, a lot.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's, here we go. But the plan, other than that, the plan looks great.
Thank you.
Welcome. I think this is really something different for Norwood and kind of.
Well, it's been different for Newport. It was different for Providence.
Well, it's a little upscale, you know? It's nice. So good luck with it. Thank you.
Joe?
I just have one more question. He mentioned the trash. How does the pickup work if you don't have a dumpster? Is it, you just put the barrels out when the town comes by on those particular days? Or how, how does this work?
Well, in.
Or do you have a private contractor?
We, we, I don't know. We'd have to, I mean, in Providence, we have a private contract, private garbage that comes by and picks up the bins once a week. In Newport, we have a dumpster that a private comes and picks up, so we would just, yeah, have a private, private company come in and pick it up.
Mrs. Homewood?
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
All right. We used to just dump in a snowbank back in the day.
Yeah.
Now we have a fancy spa.
Some still.
That's how my, that's how the old economy, my wife, you know, she grew up in Nova Scotia on 80 acres, and sauna and jumping into snow was a big part of their life, and that's how.
Which is doing new handling.
Going around the snow.
Jumping in the snow. That's it.
So welcome, and I, I know they're all looking at you like, but it's great. It's very exciting. So the hours are 8:00 AM to 9:00.
Correct.
Monday through, are you doing weekends or what? You don't know?
So one day will be closed. Right now, Newport's closed Tuesday, Wednesday, Providence is closed Wednesdays. We're undetermined on which day this is going to be closed, but it's going to be probably a Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'm just letting you do a little commercial. The fence looks great. Signage is covered. Are you going to have any food?
No.
No, like, you know, we get a little, we get a little peekit when we're spying.
We do.
These guys, maybe not.
Wonderful.
Oh, you know, a lot of spies, you get, and I don't know, that's catered in or you do.
So for private parties, yes, we will allow that, but ideally, you don't want people in the spa eating. We're not going to have like a specific area that requires more regulation, more code and everything. That said, we do have, you know, teas and, you know, granola bars and snacks that don't require food licenses.
And when are you planning on opening?
As soon as possible. Realistically, I mean, to really answer your question, the goal is before Thanksgiving. And that's our, we're hoping in November. That's our target.
Ernie can probably tell you what they, I've always been fascinated by that building. What did that building used to be?
It was travel.
I know it was a travel place, but then, then it was since 1900?
Way back.
It was a roofing center at some point.
Yeah.
It might have been a medical place too at one point.
So is it all a big open building or is it?
It was definitely a, because when we, yeah, it's entirely gunned it right now. And at one point, you know, this part, as Andrew's saying, it's three building. At one point, this right here must have had cars or, or equipment that would go in because there's these beautiful arches that go like this right here.
Why do I want to think it was the phone company way back when? Back when it was Ma Bell? I wanted, I wanted.
I thought, I thought that's across the street. I thought that was Vernon.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Vernon, the phone company? I get that. I was getting old.
But there's, there's a lot of charm in, in different aspects of the building that, you know, Andrew and his team are doing their best to, you know, keep and have invisible none. Because direct travel, you went in there, you wouldn't even know it was there until you actually pulled, pulled away the drywall.
Yeah, they've hidden everything. Yeah, as soon as we did the demo, you could see these beautiful brick archways.
Yeah.
It's gorgeous.
Fun. Okay, so maybe November. Where are you in Providence?
Broadway, 186 Broadway. It's in the corner of Broadway and Ringgold. So once you get off, on Broadway, out of 95, it's like two, three blocks up.
And I have to, Sarah, I had this conversation this afternoon. I think the uplighting is beautiful on those trees. I know I'm always the darkened skies, but I agree, I think. And thank you for saving those two pretty pink trees. And the machines are all going to be on the roof?
Yeah.
Are they, are you going to close them?
Like?
Like...
Have any closure.
Oh, if we have to. If you can see them from the street, we're going to push them as far back as possible.
And there's no sound, there's not a sound issue because they're modern machines, I'm assuming?
Again, we're in residential areas. We're using the same equipment here that we do in Providence and Newport. Yeah, I mean, we have, literally, houses right next to us.
And laundry service, are you going to do, have a laundry service?
We are pretty much a full-time laundromat. So as part of the plans, like this part here is going to be carved out as laundry. So yeah, we're full time laundromat here.
Okay, so there's now, so it's just that there is no, I mean, these buildings are built right on the sidewalk. And when that building wasn't used, you know, it's hard to get deliveries or anything over there. So I'm thrilled, thrilled, thrilled to have a fancy spa in Norwood.
Thank you. We're thrilled to be here.
I know the guys are too. They're going to be the first.
It will be. Look, we're 30% men, 70% female, so...
Except Mrs. Homewood, you're not going to be able to have a chicken pie while you're having your supper.
Well, you know, there's a sub shop around the corner. I don't take this type of stuff so far. Food thing is my...
Debbie, when you tell stories about meeting your constituents, you can tell them how you met them at the Bodie Bar.
You just don't believe, you think I'm only a one-trick pony, you know? I'm only at the dump. So I come back from the dump and get a spot.
When you get your nails done.
It's true. It's true. They don't believe me, but we talk.
I don't think they know about the dump.
All right. Welcome to town. This is a very attractive project. I think it's going to be a nice use of the property. Just, how long is a typical visit there for a client?
So two and a half hours. Pre-COVID, it used to be just endless time. You paid and you came and go. Some people would be an hour. I mean, we had some people spending eight hours, like doing work in the back. When COVID hit, like a lot of business, we had to rethink our approach. And what we did is we sectioned it into sessions. So there's, each Water Journey session is two and a half hours. And then there's a half an hour break in between the next session. That gives us time to clean and reorganize, get our heads together, and get prepared for the next group. So currently, we have five sessions. So four of them are two and a half hours. And then there's what we call Water Journey Express, which is one hour from 8 till 9 at the end. It's a, you know, reduced cost. You know, my wife, Harmony, her vision always is to provide affordable wellness to folks. So the two and a half hour is $85 per person, whereas the one hour allows for $55 per person. So you get an experience at a lower price point.
So it's not going to be, if you could, and none of this really matters in terms of the plan, but in terms of like foot traffic in there, how many, like, how many clients would you expect to see in any given moment?
Yeah, good question. So I think the Water Journey, we are probably going to be around 25 people max. And then in the treatment areas, you know, a lot of those people are going to have treatments. So there's going to be like, oh, right. So let's say Water Journey is full of people who aren't having services and the services are full of people who aren't in the Water Journey. You're probably looking at, I think we said 50?
Max.
In the parking, you just municipal lots, reparking, is what you would expect?
None of our spas have parking.
Sure. Well, looks good and good luck.
Thank you.
Yes. I have to say, everybody kind of already took questions that I had in my mind. So yeah, welcome to Norwood. This is great. Think the only question I really have is, fully understand you're going to close in some of the windows. You fully explained that. It's great, good idea. And the exterior is going to be cedar? Would you say, what's the material on the outside?
For the sign?
Yeah, for the window.
It's wood cedar.
All right, is it going to be painted? Is it going to be...
Actually, if we pull up that image. We have a couple of painted boards. We'll come up with, actually, I even have an example. I'll show you a photograph example if you go to one of the Axon up here, Sarah. This one right here. This is the facility in Providence. So it'll be like this, there'll be a pattern there. So raw cedar and then painted cedar intermixed. Just not, not a whole... So Providence, we had to get, you know, we're a historic district and had to get creative, kitted. So we couldn't take those windows out. So we actually built a wall inside and then carried the cedar on the interior of the windows to make them look like it was all, you know, one piece of thing. In this case, because the building is masonry, we thought it would look a little bit strange if we just took the top portion and brought it into the window. So we're trying to do something different, a little bit more finer detail for the humans are actually going to be up against it. But yeah, this is just about exactly what it's going to look like.
So you already talked about the gutter and the drainage and landscaping. There's a lot of water in this building and a lot of flushing and cleaning is going to happen. Is there, is there been any discussion with the town, DPW, having to deal with the water flow coming out of the building? Sewage, is there any concern?
That hasn't been discussed with us at this point. I don't believe that came up in the previous meeting either. There will be a water service upgrade, so we'll have ground open there at that point. You're thinking the water exiting the building?
Yeah, and as well as, you know, new service too.
Yeah, we'd definitely get a new service.
Yeah, water intensive.
Yeah.
Okay, so if the town didn't bring up concern on that, then I trust Mark. No, this is great. It's going to be a step up to the whole corner and the whole area. So this is great.
Wonderful.
Yeah?
Feel good walking across the street for all I'm doing. Get all that sugar back in you.
There you go.
Mrs. Homewood?
What's your staff, where are you at with staff? Approximate number of people a day, depending on how many reservations you get or...
You mean like how many staff are we going to have in there?
Yeah.
We're going to have 15 approximately.
Okay.
10, 10 service and five like front house.
Sarah, would you have anything on...
The memo that I submitted to the board recommended a handful of conditions of approval. Despite the fact that a revised landscaping plan with a new planting schedule has been submitted, we haven't had a chance to review it yet. So I would still recommend keeping that condition of approval requiring the landscaping plan with these species. The Director of Public Works did request a condition of approval that would restrict any staging of materials during construction. That none of, no activity of that sort should be permitted within the public right of hand. Our standard conditions of approval regarding landscaping, all landscaping has to be maintained. If any plants are diseased or dying, they should be replaced in kind during the same season. And we, I do recommend a condition of approval requesting that a stamped certification be submitted about the lighting being in compliance with the bylaw requirements. Aside from kind of the plan review, the site plan review, we do have an active business organization in downtown Norwood, the Friends of Norwood Center. If you haven't already, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to them. We have a thriving downtown. That's a collective effort, as well as owners like yourself. And the Friends of Norwood Center does a lot to support those local businesses. So kind of echoing the board's comments, welcoming you to town, I would also issue that same welcome and encourage you to get involved with the community. It's a great city.
Yeah, for sure.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Brian.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to approve this plan with the conditions regarding, as Sarah listed, the landscaping modifications. The, of course, I'm writing, staging, was that one of, what was the second addition?
Stamp lighting plan.
Stamp lighting plan, I'm sorry. Yeah. And the...
I think that's what I was saying.
Yeah, the standard conditions that are imposed. Does that cover?
Yeah, I would only suggest, so again, in the memo, you could reference, all of those are addressed in items one through five on memorandum. The only addition I would make would be to insert a B under condition one. This is final plans revised must include the following amendments. A would be that planting schedule I would request. B be a final sign-off by the town engineer, just certifying that his memorandum requirements have been met.
So that is proper to encompass that into my motion. That is my motion to approve.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Welcome to town.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very fancy, huh, Sarah? I think Joe and Ernie are going to be the first ones.
Well, can you grab that? Debbie, I think we can. That's our hard day at the swap shop.
A hard day at the swap shop, I'll go down and plunge myself in ice water.
There you go.
They're mocking me, okay?
They're supporting you. They're trying to get the word out about it.
The swap shop?
If the ice was full of, you know, I'd have a bottle of scotch in there with it.
I don't drink, I eat. Did you see I asked him about alcohol? No, food?
Mr. Chairman, get your board a order.
Thank you. Good luck. Looks great.
Thank you.
Can't wait to try it out.
It's nice to see you there.
Yeah.
That'd be like a whole group of us.
Yeah.
And then what's the bar of drink?
Other business?
You do have an agenda item. This is a release of covenant for 34 George Willet Parkway, Lot 1.
Thank you again.
This was a subdivision that was done in 2006. For whatever reason, Lot 1 was never released from the covenant. Lots 2 and 3 were, in exchange for a bond being posted to ensure the construction of the driveways that the planning board had approved in the subdivision at that time. That was done, the bond was released for lots 2 and 3. But this is kind of a housekeeping matter, to be honest with you. Just kind of releasing the covenant for Lot 1, which is, I guess, contingent at this point. It's on the market. So I would request that you all take a vote to release the covenant. And then each of you...
Second?
All those in favor?
Quick discussion?
Discussion on the motion?
Just a quick, Lynn kind of went over, we don't do covenants anymore, correct? We do a bond instead, is that the difference?
We can do either.
But we haven't done them in a long time, correct?
I don't think we have in some time.
So this just slipped through the attorney phase, maybe? When the other two were sold?
I can't say for sure.
Is it, are covenants registered, the registry of deeds?
They are. So this is holding up the title for the property.
So has somebody gone to the registry and looked at it or, yes?
Yes, so we have all of the records on this. And the only thing that needs to occur is the release from the planning board to clear the title.
Oh, Mr. Roach. I remember that.
Hi, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm the daughter of the owner. I'm one of the trustees of the trust that owns it, Robin Borgstet, and I'll say 34 George Willet Parkway. So when the property was subdivided, the attorney put the covenant on all three pieces, even the original piece, which should never have had the covenant on it. We don't know why he did that. So I guess it's just a formality that it has to be removed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So basically, it's a cloud on the title?
Yes.
All right, so there was a motion of second. So if the motion's on the floor, I vote aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, I'm going to send this down if you can.
There's a battle, come on, turn over there.
Thank you for letting me know the truth.
Anytime, thank you all.
Thank you. Rob Vander's grandfather's on there.
Yes. In touch to make sure to get this over to the attorney.
You're on it too, but Rob's grandfather's on there.